Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Manyaha County Commission on a beautiful spring day. If you'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I know we have a full house here today. There is overflow seating and the meeting is being broadcast next door if you're looking for a seat. All right. So there, just a reminder to silence your cell phones. There are listening devices available if you need that. If you anticipate speaking as part of public comment on any item, there's a sign in sheet over in this corner of the room that you can sign in with your name and your address and you don't have to give your address publicly. All right, that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a consent agenda. I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to regular business. First item is the presentation of the W H Lyons Fairgrounds Task Force Report. We have Eric Nyberg and Mike Jamison here, I believe, somewhere. Here they are. Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning.
My name is Mike Jamison on behalf of Eric Nyberg and our task force. And there's a number of them here. A few of them here. So thank you, folks, for joining us. We'd like to thank the commission for reaching out into the community to assign a task force the responsibility of establishing a vision for the W H Lyons Fairgrounds. So thank you very much for that. Over the past year, the task force has heard from user groups, consultants, and other interested parties to better understand the existing conditions, challenges, and opportunities at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds. Our goal this morning is to share a summary of the task force's stated vision, aspirations, recommendations, and selected findings.
Good morning, commissioners. As Mike mentioned, my name's Eric Nyberg. Really, really excited to be ahead of you today to talk about the findings from the Fairgrounds Task Force. As many of you know, it was January 2022 that this commission authorized a resolution to get this group together. The individuals behind me that raised their hands have really put a lot of work into this over the course of the last year. And Mike and I are just excited to be able to speak on behalf of the group today. In your resolution in January 22, you authorized us to prepare a vision. That was one of the main things you were after, and we're so excited to have that vision on the screen before you today. So our task force is envisioning a financially sustainable W H Lyons Fairgrounds campus that will be seen as a regional attraction for entertainment, hospitality, commercial, retail, and research development. And we'll do this by leveraging public and private partnerships to fully support, foster, and host agricultural events and large-scale agricultural expositions. I want to focus on a couple of the words on the screen, in particular because this group has spent the last month or so really honing in on the words that we wanted to use. First couple of words, financially sustainable. Mike and I will talk about that a little bit further here. I suppose technically the current site is financially sustainable and that it's continuing on, but we've seen some struggles there in the past. And this group really wants to ensure financial sustainability in the future. Additionally, private and public partnerships, certainly a key buzzword that we hear in the community a lot, but that's for a reason. Private-public partnerships work, and it's something that we feel has not been fully utilized at the site, but we have a great opportunity there. So we'll turn to the next slide here, and I'll have Mike speak about some of our aspirations.
Thanks, Eric. When we were meeting as a task force, you know, one of the things we talked about was, so what are we trying to aspire to? What are we trying to accomplish? And we really felt the task force's goal was to look beyond the present condition of the current facility. We drew inspiration, and I think from, maybe go back to that first item, not so much that what's there, but what it could be, what it should be. One of the key components of a master planning process is to look beyond the existing conditions, look beyond the present, and look to the future. We strived to be leaning forward in our vision of what this facility could become. We also drew inspiration from the partnerships, as Eric had mentioned, the partnerships that have been created to create the Phillips Falls, the Sioux River Greenway System, Lake Lorraine, the Sanford Sports Complex, and the early planning going into the Riverline District downtown Sioux Falls. We offer the following recommendations for your consideration.
Next slide, please. Recommendation one. Our first recommendation is that the county commissioners conduct the necessary due diligence to determine the existing property value and the cost of either improving the existing property to meet the standards of the vision statement that we discussed, or entertaining other potential sites for the relocation of the campus. While due diligence should not be done in haste, now is time to provide clarification regarding the long-term property status and value. The final resolution of this item will allow for more in-depth conversations with public-private partners in bringing our shared vision for the W H Line Fairgrounds campus to life. This group really felt that there were some unknowns on the value of the current property. We felt that there needed to be further due diligence done on what is underneath the ground at this property. And in order for any group to really say, hey, here's exactly what should happen, we really felt that that needed to be further studied. And that's where the due diligence item comes into play. And I also want to emphasize that this group, as shown in the recommendation, said that now is the time to do this type of a study. We really felt that we need to strike while the iron is hot. There's a lot of discussion in town about this site. This conversation's really been going on for a year here, but really, the community's paying attention right now, and we really felt that the commission needs to move forward with doing this due diligence at this time. So let's go on to the next recommendation. Recommendation two. Our task force feels that there needs to be further clarification on the existing deed restrictions so that the county can better understand what options it has at the W H Lyons Fairgrounds campus. We need to do this while still meeting the intent of the deeds. As many of you know, there's a lot of confusion, misinterpretation of what is in the deed restrictions for this site. This county received an unbelievably great gift from Winona Axstill all those years ago, but we certainly know that it didn't come without some strings attached. And this group really felt that there were a lot of different opinions on the deed restrictions, but we felt that the commission really needed to work to get a professional and legal opinion on the deed restrictions for a multitude of reasons. One of those is to figure out whether the county's currently complying with all of those deed restrictions. We think so, but it may not be the case. We felt like a legal opinion could be garnered to actually determine that. In addition, we felt that by hiring outside legal counsel to determine that, we could really take some of the biases and preconceived notions that we have, and maybe even the commissioners have, to further study those. But those deed restrictions have really hindered, we feel, the ability to make this site the best that it can be. One of those, by way of example, is, well, we can only enter into contracts for this site for a period of five years. Well, that makes it really difficult to garner private support for a site. You look at so many of the naming rights around town, a lot of those contracts run for a period of longer than five years. So when you're restricted by something like that, it really makes it difficult to really make the site as good as it can be. So we really felt that that was one of the things that needed to be cited, studied further. We also understand that any legal opinion on the deed restrictions that come through might not be black and white. At the end of the day, it might not be as clear as somebody saying you can and can't do X. We understand that that may make some tough judgment calls for the commission to make, but nevertheless, we feel like those deed restrictions need to be studied further. Let's move on to recommendation three, and Mike will hit on that one.
Thanks, Eric. Recommendation three. Establish a joint Manyah County-City of Sioux Falls Working Group to brainstorm potential organizational models, funding avenues, and public-private partnerships so that the W H Lyons Fairgrounds can transform into a regional agricultural campus that provides greater cultural and economic impact to our community. We think this is extremely important, and I think for us, we've seen the value in those interactions, those conversations, because as we look at what this facility could become, it really is going to be dictated by what we use as the structure to create it. And so we think that's very important. We also felt it was important to provide you some highlights from our task force, and so right now we'll follow up some highlights. Before we go on to that, halfway through, any questions to start with, or we can let us finish up?
I think you should finish up, and then we can ask questions.
We'll do. Selected highlights from our findings. The most frequently frequent comments that task force members heard from the public and from potential public-private partners were in regards to the status of the land. Is it for sale? What's the value of the land? Can it be sold? Another item was deed restrictions, our hindrance to the operation and development of the campus. As Eric mentioned, that five-year contract is really, is a tough piece to get passed. And so we need to have those conversations about that deed. Current funding is not sufficient to repair or enhance the campus. This was a reoccurring theme that we heard as we talked to other fairs around the state that, yeah, they had enough to get by, they had enough to do the next fair, the next event, but they didn't have enough money to do the things they needed to do to make that a future event that people wanted to go to, as things got to be tougher and tougher as far as physical plan. The Fairgrounds is utilized over 330 days a year, and over 500 people attend each year. So it's a space that people want to go to. We want to make sure we just do a better job of creating that environment that goes along with that.
Continuing on, the facilities and grounds do not meet the standards of excellence our community and region have come to expect from the state's largest population center. And I'd stop there because we had a really good quote from one of our task force members kind of expanding on that a little bit. One task force member said, "Everything we do in Sioux Falls is generally best-in-class." Examples include the Sanford Sports Complex, our giving for the United Way, how vibrant our chamber is, the Denny Sanford Premier Center, and on and on. We need to implement the same standards of excellence to this campus as we do elsewhere throughout the city of Sioux Falls. We really thought that that quote rang true to that highlight. Continuing on, regional livestock shows want to come to Sioux Falls due to the local amenities and ease of access to interstates. The conditions of the property is a deterrent to securing these shows. Can't emphasize that one enough. We heard some, from some really good expositioners that come to Sioux Falls and utilize our site. These individuals were great to hear from because they travel around the country for these type of expos as well. And they absolutely love our town. They love our community, they love the people, they love going downtown, the restaurants are awesome. You can get anywhere really easy from Sioux Falls, north, south, east, or west due to the interstate system. And they want to come here, but they were very clear in that the facilities are deterrent to coming back to Sioux Falls. Expanding on that, the Expo Center is the only facility of substantial size for livestock events in our region. The Fairgrounds has an annual and economic impact of $35 million. While that number initially we felt is decently good, we just felt like there was a lot more opportunity to really grow that number larger than $35 million. Additionally, city sales tax is not collected on the Fairgrounds site. We really felt that kind of relates to the funding issue and just a lost opportunity for revenue by not having any city sales tax collected on the Fairgrounds site.
And our last item is a seven, 10-day outdoor annual event is a challenging business model with inherent financial risks. We believe that this is the time to create a business plan and the public-private partnerships to support and promote a financially sustainable W H Lyons campus that will be regional, a regional attraction for entertainment, hospitality, commercial, retail, and research development to support and foster and host these types of activities. And with that, I think we're ready for questions.
All right. Well, thank you for all the work. I know you guys have been really working hard. This group has had a lot of meetings and dived deep into some of this. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment first and then open it, turn it over to the commissioners for any questions. So is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this report for public comment?
Do you want to just speak your comment?
You can come to the mic if you'd like. And did you sign in in the corner?
I did not.
Okay, you'll need to do that before you leave, but if you could just give us your name, please.
Yeah, Laura Hubbell from Sioux Falls. And thank you for all you've done. Love Sioux Falls, love the amenities and stuff. I just want to issue a word of caution about public-private partnerships. They are, in effect, almost a fascist type of organization. It, in fact, Mussolini called his public-private partnerships corporatism. And it, in my world, it kind of blurs the line between government and corporations. Not that I'm against them. You know, I am for them, especially in a case like this, but Hoover Dam, for example, was a public-private partnership. And it kind of blurs the line. When you use those too often, it blurs the line between government and private business. It kind of makes everybody a statist instead of an individual business. So I'm just issuing a word of caution. Do not let public-private partnerships go to the same level that happened with Mussolini. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll turn it over to the commission. Any questions for the commissioners? The commissioners? Commissioner Karski?
You know, no questions, but I am going to have a lot of comments, so please bear with me. First of all, thanks to the task force. It was a long, longer than imagined, so you guys did a great job in a lot of meetings. You know, we hear a lot in the report about, you know, maybe the condition and the facilities. And I would say that the Fair Board has done a, really a fantastic job, given the resources that they've had to maintain what is out there. It's been, you know, a lot of baling wire and rubber bands and so forth. So, you know, they've done a good job. They've been handicapped by the amount of resources that are available for them to get things done. Couple of things that, when I read through this report, that really stuck out to me. You know, the cost of improving an existing property, we heard it was going to be $110 million and probably significantly more. So we kind of have a good idea of what it's going to cost to build that fairgrounds that's world-class or that's the type of thing that our community is used to seeing, that first-class event place. Personally, I think that Manyaha County needs to get clear title to this property, and that's going to cost, and it's not just an opinion of various attorneys, because until you go to court and you can get clear title, it's, it is what it is. It's an opinion. So I will be proposing that our commission fund getting clear title to this property so that we can make decisions that are appropriate for what needs to happen out there. And then we talk a lot about the value. We were offered $50 million or something for this property at a commission meeting a while ago. So we know it's worth, you know, approximately that, but that's just a guess, and it's without first finding out what's under that property. I think the second thing that we need to do is do the borings that everybody wants to know what's going to make this, is this property have the value that it's perceived to have. And then we talk about the deed restrictions, you know, five-year contracts and that type of thing. I think if we'd get the clear title, that would instantly clear up those types of things where we would be able to have more authority to manage what's happening at our fairgrounds. Personally, I think we can do all these things and still honor the intent of Winona Lyons. Great philanthropist and did great things for our community. Don't have to go very far in town or out of town to see what she's done. So we do need to honor all those, what she wanted and what she requested. Right now, I can tell you that the county doesn't have $100 million to stick into the fairgrounds, at least not from the budget numbers I've seen and what we have coming up. So, I mean, there's things that we can do, and value the land is a big thing. I love the idea of the private partner, private and government task force between the city, the county, and the community on figuring out, once we get the first things established, where do we go from here? And you're right, the iron is hot. We need to keep striking at the metal and forge it the way it needs to be done properly. So thank you for what you've done. I do not intend to put this on a shelf and let it collect dust. I will be pushing to do what I said as far as the title, so thank you again.
Does anybody else want to pontificate or have questions, comments?
Was I pontificating?
Well, we do really appreciate the work that you guys have done. It's a very difficult problem. I mean, we have done a lot of work in getting attorneys' opinions. We do know that it's very complicated and that there are no magic solutions to this. We've got the gift. When we take gifts, the county needs to be aware that they come with consequences, and this was a gift that was made a long time ago, and it was accepted with a lot of strings attached. And there is no clear answers, and there's a lot of risk involved in a lot of different options moving forward. So we will continue to look at this. But we do really, I think the work that your task force has done has just reemphasized a lot of what we already knew, is that this is a really tough nut to crack. And we do need to try to figure out a way to move forward, but there are no easy, no clear paths forward. And I think your report shows that, you know, honestly, if we don't have the right to sell the property, then your first two recommendations are basically that we skip right to recommendation three and try to figure out a way to fund, to fund a better facility, which I think we all agree we, we want to do. We just, the funding is a challenge. So, so anyway, thank you again for everybody's work that they did. And with that, if there are no more questions, we will move on to the next item. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 11, which is a public hearing for appeal of a decision by the Manyaha County Planning Commission to approve CUP number 23-14. I think Mason Stephan, I saw him walk by earlier, so maybe he's in the other room. Okay, there he is. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Mason Stephan, Planner One from the Manyah County Planning and Zoning Office. As explained, this item is an appeal for conditional use permit application 2314. The Planning and Zoning Office has received several appeal letters for the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit 2314, which was to allow a rubble dump or tree grinding operation on the subject property. The property is located at the intersection of 267th Street and 464th Avenue, which, as you can see here, you can see the property here, and it's approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls. The item was heard by the Planning Commission at their meeting on April 24, 2023. Several neighbors to the proposed operation and other concerned citizens were at this meeting and expressed their concerns. Most of the discussion involved traffic issues, garbage along the roads, specifically 267th Street, and the potential for dust and noise nuisances from the tree grinding. After listening to the public input, the Planning Commission did vote to approve the proposed rubble dump with a vote of six to zero. And along with their approval, the Planning Commission did amend condition number two to set the hours of operation as Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to noon or 12:00 p.m. The appeal letters for the, for this operation were signed by multiple landowners that are in the area of this or just in Wall Lake Township in general. The appeal letters were received between April 28 and May 1. And after receiving these appeal letters, I did send courtesy letters to this meeting to everybody that was either appealed or was within the 500, the required 500-foot setback from the operation as required by the county ordinance. For your review, I did include the staff report, the petitioner submitted narrative, along with the appeal letters and a lot of other information that was submitted to our office that was submitted for your review. Before I go over the location there, I just want to read the 11 conditions that were approved at the county commission level, just so that those are stated here today. So condition number one is that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan. Condition number two is that the process of grinding wood shall only take place during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday. Number three, that only clean, untreated, unpainted, and unstained wood shall be accepted for processing. No other material shall be accepted. Number four, that approval of a driveway permit must be obtained from the proper road authority before the operation shall begin. Number five, that all driveways, including loading and unloading areas, shall be gravel-surfaced. Number six, that a building permit is required for any buildings built in conjunction with the tree grinding operation. Number seven, that one on-premise sign is permitted and shall not exceed 32 square feet in size. A building permit must be obtained prior to installation, and the sign may not be located within the right-of-way. Number eight, that the operation must maintain a gate or a person on the site during drop-off hours to prevent the dumping of non-wood products. Number nine, that no parking shall be allowed within the public right-of-way at any time. Number 10, that the operation will be allowed to operate under the conditions of this permit until January 31, 2033. The business owner will be required to obtain another conditional use permit before this date if they wish to continue operating at this location. And number 11, that the Building, Planning and Zoning Department reserves the right to enter and inspect the site at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval in the Manyah County zoning ordinance. So I just wanted to read those so those were stated today so that there wasn't any confusion on what was actually approved at the Planning Commission level. As you can see here, this is the subject property. I'll scroll down to the site plan in a minute, but the petitioner is actually only leasing a 10-acre piece roughly where my cursor is right here. When we create these location maps, the notification is based on the entire property, but the site plan, as you can see here, is only a 10-acre piece on that very west portion. And then I'll just show some pictures here quickly. So this is looking to the southeast. That hill back there is the land, Sioux Falls landfill. This is looking directly south into the land, along the landfill access, and down there is the gate to the landfill. This is looking to the northeast/north, and you can see that this is, generally, this field here is where the trees would be stacked, and then that tree line up there is along 267th Street. And here's just looking directly to the north along the access. To the west of me here is the gas station for the landfill, so they have gas pumps here that are covered by gates for the landfill. And then this is looking directly west on 267th, and this is looking directly east on 267th. So this, to the south of this picture, is where the operation would be, and you can see the existing trees there. So the Planning Commission did vote to approve this with those 11 conditions as stated, and the Manyah County Commission can uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission's approval decision for conditional use permit 2314. And I am available for any questions if you have them directly from me.
Any questions for Mason? All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will let the proponent speak first. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Paul Cheddar, Voice Law Firm, represent Mueller Palletts. First, my clients asked that I extend to you their appreciation and having the hearing this morning. They are chaperoning an honor flight today, so they're not able to be in attendance. I'm ultimately going to ask for your deferral of this matter. I just have a couple of short comments. Condition number four, and the site- Condition number four and the site plan that Mason shared with you show a driveway immediately to the east of the gas station facility on the entry to the landfill. That road is a section line highway, but the city of Sioux Falls owns 17 feet between the section line right-of-way and the fence line. As such, the city's approval of access is required. They would be issuing the approvals. Condition four requires that we get a permit or authorization from the party that's got a control of that, of that road. So we're in conversations with the city of Sioux Falls to talk about traffic flow, access and other potential solutions that may ultimately impact what, what takes place on the site. So in light of that, I would ask that the commission today defer this matter to allow for further conversations to take place with the city. I know there are people here to speak. I spoke with Mason late last week following a Friday meeting with the city and notices had been sent, so people obviously made time to come here today and speak to you. I don't want to squelch the opponents or proponents from giving you their views on this, but I'd ask that you defer action on this matter until sometime after June 15th to give my clients and I the opportunity to continue our conversation with the city of Sioux Falls. I can certainly answer questions, but if it is your inclination to defer this, I want to respect your time and speak to some more of the details of this at that future meeting. But I would reserve the right to speak at the conclusion of opponent testimony if there's anything that I feel needs to be clarified quickly before you take action on, on this matter. But I would ask you to defer it till after June 15th to give us an opportunity to address some of the concerns that have been raised. And lastly, my client's current operation is located just south of 271st at the T-exit off of I-29. That site is concluding operation. They're in the process of cleaning it up. That means they don't have a site in the Sioux Falls metro area. The only other significant wood recycler is the Sioux Falls Regional Landfill. The wood material is coming down West 41st to the landfill. So the concerns that the residents in that area are going to voice to you are concerns that are going to exist and be borne out in the coming days and months, regardless of whether Mueller is grinding and recycling wood or it's happening at the landfill site. So I think one thing that Commissioner Kipley could speak to from his experience last month at the Planning Commission meeting is there was a lot of frustration with the way that homeowners feel they're being treated along West 41st and that will bear itself out in the comments that you hear today. Thank you for your time.
All right, in light of the motion to defer, I'm going to look to the commissioners on that particular item and then, then we'll go to the opponents. Commissioner Karski.
Okay, so I guess what I would like to, time on the city council that I spent, I mean, June 15th, I mean, this has to be approved by the city council. It has to get on their agenda. It has to, you know, go through a two-week process. I don't think June 15th is nearly enough time for them to do what they need to do on top of all the administrative stuff. So if there is a deferral, I think, you know, the first week of July is probably the soonest that they could successfully get anything done and that might even be pushing it.
I'd like Scott to come forward or Mason, somebody to come forward and talk to us about scheduling. Because if we are going to defer it, out of respect for all the people who are here today, I'd like to, I don't want to do this again. I don't want to have another hearing set and then defer it, ask for it to be deferred again. I would, I would not be supportive of that, so.
I share the same thoughts that Commissioner Karski just expressed is that my experience with the city is that a month is just not much time to turn around with as many elements that they're going to have to deal with. So I, I share that same concern and I also appreciate Commissioner Bender's. Also, I don't want to make people come back multiple times and we keep on continuing this. So I feel that maybe a longer continuation is needed.
So Scott, what if, I mean, what happens if we ask them to just come back to us when they've got their ducks in a row? Is, how does that work?
Well, and I'll have to defer to the state's attorney, but it's my understanding that typically we need to continue these to a date specific because then that allows the, the people that have been notified or the people in the public and in the neighbors, they know when it will be on the agenda. My, when we have issues like this, if you just say, "Come back to us when you work it out", we don't, it, it just doesn't give the neighbors the, the, this, the definitive time that they need to be here. So if, the other options that you have is you can deny this. They come, they have, they can reapply in six months. And then we go through, start the process all over again. We notify the, the neighbors, et cetera. So I think, and I would then turn it, or if I have stated anything incorrectly, I hope the state's attorney will correct me.
So if we defer it today to a date certain, the neighbors won't get any written notice of that. They, what they get is what, that it's public record as, as of today, the date that we are going to have it?
Generally, yes. So what we will do is if we, if we continue it to a date certain, we will not send out notices again, but there is a green notice, a green large metal sign on the property. We would go out and repost the new date and time on that sign. It would be on our, it would be on the, the web, the county's website. So there, those times are, are put on there. We would not send out notices again.
Okay, I'm going to look to Mr. Cheddar. Given the fact that if you guys don't have your easements and things done the next time, your chances of getting through this process here would be lessened, I would think. So given the information that's been discussed so far, is there a date you would like to us, that you'd like to defer it to?
I agree with Commissioner Karski, you know, 30 days is probably not enough time. I, I think a denial today is unfairly punitive to the applicant in that we then are going back to the starting gates when we're trying to have this private, public partnership conversation with the city to find a solution. I would be comfortable with somewhere in the range of 60 or 90 days if that's, if that's your inclination. But I think a denial sends the wrong message to, to people that are taking the time to find a solution, to work with neighbors and landowners and impacted public entities going forward.
So August 1st or August 15th?
I would prefer the 15th of August. I think would give us enough, more than adequate time, especially in light of your comments, Madam Chair, that you don't want to have us come back and ask for additional time. I would rather have, be liberal on the timeline than not.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Benning, go.
Well, I certainly agree with all the comments that have been made. Fortunately or unfortunately, I've been through the process with the city also and things do not move fast by any stretch. And I don't think it's fair to either party to deny this and delay it for probably six months. I don't think that's the right thing to do. So giving them enough time to look at their plans, which they've already submitted to, I think, the city council and making a significant investment in changing some parts and maybe even moving accesses to the property and addressing some of the neighborhood legitimate concerns about noise, debris, traffic counts and all that is very important to them. And frankly, the neighbors have been good partners with the city and the county for years in that location. And if there's a way for the city to improve those issues that have been addressed by multiple people, because we've all received tons of emails and phone calls, which we appreciate. I do think in fact, giving them 90 days to at least come up with a better plan than they currently have or one that is agreed on is the right thing to do. And we'll address it one more time, I guess, to make that happen.
Any other comments? Okay, so given that we're probably looking at a deferral until mid-August, I know that there are a lot of people here today who are here to speak in opposition to this and I am going to give you an opportunity to speak if you don't think you could come back in August. Because I know a lot of you have made a lot of sacrifices to be here this morning. Jobs, family, whatever. But I would prefer that you not say something today and then say the exact same thing in August. And, and I would tell you, as I told some people before the meeting started, that speaking today, we will listen, but we are humans, just like all of you sitting in this room today. And a lot will happen in our lives between now and mid-August. And so we will remember better if it's spoken in August, on the day that we take a vote. But given that, if you would like to come forward and speak today because you are here and you're not sure what your schedule would be like in August, I'm happy to have the opponents, anybody who's in opposition to this, come forward and speak today.
Hi, my name's Grant Edgecombe. Thank you for having us. And I just have a couple of questions with what was presented. There were applications for opposition to the permit. There were names on those. Is there a number along with just a couple of sheets of pro-opposition? A number, there were names. Everybody that was on that put their name and address, phone number, maybe. Is there a number that goes along with that?
Are you asking how many people provided letters, emails, opposition, signed in opposition to this prior to today?
We did it as a group and so there were just a few sheets rather than having everybody turn in a sheet. And so on the back, we had a listing of their name and address. And I'm wondering if there's a number along with that. So did you count the names on the back of the sheet?
Sure.
And if there's a number?
Yeah.
Just one?
I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure where you're going with this because you might have different numbers by August 15th. So what's the point you're trying to make with regard to the number?
No notifications are being sent out, but they have the information of the petitioners.
Yeah.
And why wouldn't you at least notify those?
We're not required by our ordinance to send out. That's what Scott was trying to clarify. But a lot of you are here today. You guys are a pretty well-organized group, so I would hope that, that word would get out. And this is a public meeting, so the record will be out there and it will be posted on the sign.
Sure.
Okay.
But we've been good community members and why wouldn't you want to let us know? Or could you?
We are letting you know today. We can talk about it later, but that, you've understood, we've communicated what the rules are.
Okay. Will we get to be involved with the city discussions and all? So that the public is going to get to hear, so we can develop pros and cons or whatever. Well, I'm representing a community of people. It's a, the large number and so.
Well, we've encouraged Mueller Pallets to be working with you guys and to the extent the city takes public action, it will be the same as today. You'll have opportunity to contact city councilors. You have opportunity to be at those meetings and express your opinions.
Okay. And I saw a site map. Is that an 80-acre plot? And they have, this zoning permit is for all 80 acres and all they have to do is ask the landowners if they'd lease us another 10 acres or another 20, another 80 acres. And then that's already approved, so they just have to work the lease out with the landowner? Is that?
I'm having trouble following your questions, to be honest with you.
Expansion. So they've got a 10-acre site.
We will approve whatever they bring forward. And if they want to change that, then they would have to bring it forward again.
Okay, they can't just go to the landowner and say, "We'd like to lease another 20 acres. We've run out of space. That can't be done."
Mason or Scott, do you guys want to come forward and address that question, please?
So condition number one on the conditional use permit says that it has to follow the submitted site plan. So if they were to change that site plan, whether expansion, change the access or anything change that, what's up on the screen right there, would either require an amendment of this permit if it's approved or a whole new conditional use permit, so.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, we just want to have a little knowledge to be able to.
And you're welcome to work with our planning department if you have questions.
We've worked with them before.
They're good about answering questions.
That's all I got.
All right, anybody else?
So long as they're going.
Can you please give us your name?
Diane Rungy, Hartford, South Dakota.
This is for testimony, not just for questions.
No, this is, well, they should do an environmental testing out there for what the quality of air is going to be out there before they even get out there. And I've asked the county, the city, the highway department and they gave me the runaround of why they were not doing this study and it would affect us quite a bit with the air quality. So I would just think a study would go along with that. And that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Now remember, if you guys are speaking today, I'm going to ask you not to have the same comments when we actually hear this in August. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Josh Peterson with the city of Sioux Falls. I'm the Environmental Services Manager for the city and the Sioux Falls Regional Landfill falls under my department. Just wanted to give a few quick comments to some of the things that were said today since you, you knew where we're at. We have met with, with Mueller Pallets and, and Mr. Cheddar and started some discussions on some ideas that they've come up with. Appreciate you guys considering a deferral of, of this because there's a lot of things to consider there. We, we've just got some very preliminary information from them and so there's a lot of details before we can make any decisions. So, you know, we'll endeavor to work as fast as we can. I can't say that I will be ready in 60 to 90 days with a decision of where we're at until we have some of that additional information. But we want to continue to work with them proactively and try and find a, a solution that works for everybody. One of the comments Mr. Cheddar said of, if Mueller closes and the wood has no place to go, it's coming to landfill, that's probably the case since we are the only other business that is collecting wood as, as part of our services. We're not looking to take any additional materials. That's, that's not in our best interest, so we want to work with them, whether it's this location or someplace else, proactively on a solution. And then finally, to the, to the citizens who were submitting some comments, just wanted to say, you know, if we're working on this site, eventually there would need, if we work on a access, we would look at having an easement across our property that would need to go in front of our city council for resolution and approval. That's a very public process and, and residents will be able to make comments through that process as well. So we would have a very open and public process for that as well. And so, and they've, they've all got my email and phone numbers as well. They've been submitting comments to me and I do appreciate it. I like to hear everybody's opinion and we, we take that all into account. So I just wanted to, just wanted to say that for you and, and appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much. All right, so anybody, I'm still on the opponents. Anybody else in opposition this morning? All right. Mr. Cheddar, do you feel like you need a rebuttal? That'll be part of the tape I'm going to get. So, thank you. All right, so I'll turn it over to the commission.
I'm going to make a motion to defer to August 15th.
Second with a comment.
All right, motion and a second. Commissioner Kipley.
So I just wanted to address, we did approve this at the Planning Commission level and we did note that one of the conditions for approval number four was that a, the driveway permit must be obtained from the proper authority. So we did take this into account to some degree, but I think it is proper to defer the item and get it done the right way with some partners at the city. I will also strongly encourage our friends at the city to, to work, of course, with Mueller Pallets, but also take into account, I think, a lot of the feedback we got at the Planning Commission, just to kind of let my colleagues know. Yes, there were some unique concerns to Mueller Pallets, but a lot of it was, I think we got the sense and why the Planning Commission approved it at that level was there'd be some incremental increase, yes. But I think a lot of the feedback we got from the community was just the nature of this neighborhood, being near a landfill, the traffic, just some of those externalities of, of things, falling out of trucks or dumping or other issues. I, I'm encouraging any, any departments, this isn't to pass the buck away from the county, but I know I've had some conversations with some county officials as well, but also city officials. I think we've, we've all got to be good neighbors with one another and, and take into some of these concerns that we've got to have proper traffic control and proper cleanup and just making sure. and just making sure our roadwids are, are clear and safe, those types of things. So we did approve this at the planning level with certain conditions, and I think this deferral will make sure those conditions are met with that intent and that we've got proper partners at the city. So I'll support the deferral.
Commissioner Benega.
Could we ask Mr. Peterson, I thought I heard that you were concerned that sixty days wasn't enough? And I don't really want to have to have this conversation again, so it would be nice to have a definite input from you on when you can complete that.
It, it's a little tough to give a definitive answer until we've, we've seen some of the ideas that Mueller wants to bring forward. They, they've brought forward not only working together on this site, but even just broadly at some other level of some sort of a public-private partnership or joint venture or other location. And so, you know, that opens the door for a lot of possibilities out there, and, and I, I just don't know exactly how long that's going to take to vet. I mean, I, I think sixty days at this site, I'm, I'm, I feel hopeful that we would be able to answer all those questions by then and be able to give a definitive answer. But until we get some middles from, from Mueller and, and know exactly what they're planning and what they would commit to, I just can't give you a definitive answer.
Well, I would guess, frankly, the ball's in your court because we understand Mueller's situation, we understand their representation issues, but we also want to conclude to the, the people who have expressed themselves that this is being addressed. And I don't really think it's fair to them or to Mueller to set a date and not have an answer. So I think we really need to have that. And you're the ones that have the responsibility of making that happen or changing it to a different location or whatever.
We, we will endeavor to do everything we can to, to have a resolution by then. We, we will, we respect your time just as much as we respect ours and all the citizens here, and we want to, we want to keep this process as smooth and as we can.
Commissioner Karski.
Just in the interest of not making time go any faster than it already does, August is ninety days.
Right. I heard you say thirty, sixty, or ninety, or whatever, and I would like a more definitive date than what the old options were, I guess.
I, I think August is, is a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, the ball's going to be in your court.
Scott, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I just want to make sure that they, the audience, the county commission, and the applicant are clear that the conditional use permit that's being considered today is for this particular property. If they move it a quarter mile away to a different property, it is going to trigger a whole new conditional use permit, and the process will start all over again. So we would, we would take it back to the planning commission, new notices would be sent out. So I just want everyone to know that. Right now, we're looking at this site. This was the legally described property that has been noticed. So if they move it someplace else, it will be a new process starting from scratch.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the commission? All right, if not, I have a motion and a second to defer it until the commission meeting on August fifteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this morning. I guess as our room is going to become significantly more chairs available here. All right, that takes us to item twelve, which is the Siouxland Heritage Museum's annual briefing. And I'm sure the fact that everybody's getting up and leaving is not reflective of Bill Hoskins, the museum director, so.
Sure it is. Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. The Siouxland Heritage Museums were formed nearly fifty years ago through a joint cooperative agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. We operate three buildings, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, the Old Courthouse Museum, and the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. People are what we're really all about. Attendance was up twenty-one percent in 2022 and five percent in the first quarter of 2023. Our visitors came from across the country and across the world. Thirty-one different states in the first quarter of 2023, despite the winter, and five foreign countries. The Pettigrew and the Old Courthouse Museum have once again been placed on TripAdvisor's top ten things to do in Sioux Falls. We have, do a lot of off-site programming in the schools. That was up substantially in 2022. Really, our return to the Sioux Falls and area of schools following COVID. And we anticipate that that off-site programming will continue to go up in 2023. One of our challenges coming down the road, dealing with school programming, is the new social studies curriculum, and that's implementation, and the effects that that will have on the museum's program. As schools shift grades for historical topics, and teachers will also be doing a lot of shuffling and rewriting of some of our programming and remarketing that to the schools. The museum manages a collection of over a hundred and twenty thousand objects. They're managed on a collections management program called PassPerfect. And one of our goals over the last year has been the expansion of the public, what's accessible and searchable by the public through the museum's website and PassPerfect. Last year, we went from ten thousand objects at the beginning of the year that were searchable by the public to just over seventy-five thousand objects. And that's something that we'll be continuing forward. One of our other great opportunities came along last year, actually when the Argus Leader building was sold. And in what is the largest donation ever made to the Siouxland Heritage Museums in terms of numbers, the Argus Leader donated to us hundreds of bound volumes of newspapers, over eleven hundred rolls of microfilm of the Argus Leader, and literally tens of thousands of photographs that had appeared in Argus newspapers over the years. This is a great collection. Too good to pass up. It's the history of our community, our state and region. The staff and volunteers are working to organize those photos, scan them, and enter them into the PassPerfect database, cataloging them, so that they can be made available to the public as a whole. Usually in the spring, I get the opportunity to thank you for the museum's special enterprise fund. I'll do that today. It's been a great tool and device for private funding of some of the museum projects, such as the curation of the Argus Leader collection. And we're doing that through donors, grants, using resources like the museum's endowment. As the Siouxland Heritage Museums approach their fiftieth birthday, the staff continues to work to build community relationships, participate in cooperative ventures to really better serve the public. Visitors and their experience is really the key to growth for the museums. We've got a lot of programming that we do on and off-site. Diverse exhibits, change all the time, but it's really the outstanding customer service and that diversity that keeps the public coming back. I'll cut it off there. If, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. And of course, I invite you to come visit the museum if you haven't been there lately.
Thank you. Any questions for Bill this morning? All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time this morning. All right, so that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is the auditor's annual briefing. Good morning.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, your county auditor. First, I just want to thank a lot of the people that are remaining here. Our friends of mine, so they came to support me, so I thank them. But what does the auditor's office do? So if you want to scroll, okay. Basically, in general terms, the auditor's office is in control of outgoing funds, so any payments that are going out of the county, and then also elections. But within that, there's a lot that happens, so I'll just go through a little bit of that. We have an accounting manager, Renee, and she manages our accounting department, and she also provides support in other areas as needed. Under her, we have accounts payable and liens. You can stay on that slide for a little bit. Accounts payable and liens, so we have Anna and Monica, and they manage the outgoing payments in the tune of about twenty-five million dollars per month that goes out of our county. Or, I'm sorry, not, yes. And then we have liens. Michael manages the liens, and he enters or works with about a hundred and thirty-five liens per month. We have document management and recording, so Kim is our commission recorder, but she also manages a lot of documents and does a lot of the filings for liquor licenses. And there's just a very long list of things that Kim does, so we appreciate her. Tax administration, Jean, she manages our outgoing property tax money. So as people pay their property taxes, we turn around and, and send out that money to other entities, to municipalities, schools, other cities. Then we have payroll, and Angie keeps about six hundred and eighty employees happy every other week by paying them. We manage capital assets, and with that, Rhonda manages that. She sees about three hundred million of capital assets that she manages. We have the budget and finance management, and Susan is the one that manages and provides support for budget and grant oversight. And then we also have election management, and April, who is our elections coordinator, she provides support for not just our elections, but also municipal and city elections that are within the county. So for instance, today, the school board election is going on, and she had to stay late last night and enter early voting, absentee voting. And then she is here today from seven to seven to help support their election. The staff, in 2023, there have been no staff changes. I know when Ben was appointed, pretty much the whole area or all of the staff except for one has been replaced or, or added. And so it's just great that everybody has remained in place for 2023. The onboarding, when I came in, went very well. The staff was very helpful, and I even met with Ben a few times before I got sworn in, just to get a little heads up on different things. So our plan this year and going into next is to not add any staff positions, but we do have an open staff position that we are looking at restructuring. And we would like to have that staff person support both elections and accounting. So that is to come, but we will be restructuring that position. And then in regards to staffing in our office, the remodeling that was completed right before I came has been very good, and we have room for growth. And the space is very functional, so we are appreciative of that. So I've been in office for about two and a half months, if you want to go the, a couple slides, there we go. I've been in office about two and a half months. It's been busy. So the first, one of the first things that I've been working on was our Moody's rating for the bond issuance for the Juvenile Justice Center. And we retained our AA1 rating, which is great. We are rated very high as a county. And what that allows for us as a county is to keep our bond interest rates low. So, and we were told a couple of things that could affect that would be if our cash reserves were depleted too far, and also if we were to ever switch to a cash basis accounting system, which we do not do, we're modified accrual. So that will keep our rating high if we stay focused on those two areas. So in also during the time that I've been there, we've helped with several municipal elections. In 2023, we will have eight total after this one, and then the West Central coming up in June. Currently, we're also preparing for our 2024 budget. And Susan is very fluid there, so she's been working on that a lot, but it's been great to be part of that process. We are not planning for any material increases in our budget for '24. We are gonna, our budget will be actually a little lower than it was in 2020. And '24 is a election, or a presidential election year, so we will have a higher budget than we did this year. We are also in the final stages of doing some precinct boundary changes and additions. So I'm going to go a little bit more in-depth into that. In 2021, the legislature changed the districts. And we all know from voting in '22 that there were precincts that were confusing, and there were precincts that were overcrowded, so there were a lot of long waiting, there was wait lines. So the plan is to, or our goal is to equalize the in-person voter distribution. So we would like to see our precincts more equal and have smaller numbers. So to do that, in addition to redrawing the lines, we're looking to add eight precincts approximately. We're in the, in the works right now. So eight precincts, which would also include possibly six to eight new polling locations. That has been in the works before I came, and it's a very large task. I, I think every day, April and I have conversation about this project. So it takes up a lot of our time, but it's very important. So with more polling locations, that means more workers and more supplies. So in our 2024 budget, we are planning for this increase, and we also are hoping to get help from the community. So what does this mean? Well, we need more workers and we need more volunteers. So we are looking at needing over five hundred workers for the primary and the general elections. And then one other thing that was implemented that started before I came was in the IT department, they have created a new application that is in the final stages right now, that will help us manage those workers and those supplies for our elections. So for Election Day, some changes that we're looking at implementing is having not just our full-day options, where workers are there from seven to seven, actually, they're there before and after seven. That's a very long day for some people. And so we're hoping to find ways that workers can help us but have a half a day. So that would be a coming change. We also are looking at having greeters, and these greeters would help navigate and direct voters. So in some of the precincts where, or some of the polling locations where we might have to have two precincts at one location, we want to have a greeter that is ready to answer questions and make sure people are going in the right lines. So it, what that would look like is, at that polling location, we would have two full setups, so two teams of people. The lines would be separate, and we would want to make sure that those voters get into the correct lines and that they don't wait in line and then find out that they're at the wrong location. and that they don't wait in line and then find out that they're at the wrong location. So implementing greeters that might have a smartphone or an iPad so that they can check and see on the VIP portal where that voter needs to be. And then we also want to have problem solvers. So somebody that comes into the line and, and they think, especially in the primary, that they might be able to vote and then they find out that their party affiliation doesn't line up with that. We would like to be able to help them, but pull them aside and help them so that the line could keep flowing. And so having a problem solver there would be a great addition. So recent legislation, we can go to that slide. So a lot of election laws were passed this year in the legislature. There's a couple of them that directly affect us more significantly than others. So SB 139, that establishes a 30-day residency requirement for those who wish to register to vote in our state. This will impact our voter purge that will take place this summer. And since 2023 is an off-election year, we will spend time cleaning up the voter rolls. That's something that happens every other year prior to a general election. And we also are hoping to send out additional letters to those who maybe need to fill out a new voter registration application due to not having a residential address on their voter registration. So this will impact our current 2023 budget and also the '24 budget. Just extra communication. Going back also to those precinct changes, we will need to notify those voters as well of their precinct location changes. So another bill that was passed is SB 160. And that bill establishes the opportunity to conduct post-election audits. Our state has never conducted an audit. And while this process will require more work and cost, I am in complete support of post-election audits. I would like to see the community engage in that as well. So we will be looking for volunteers. And then I guess one note that while SB 160 will also impact our budget, the state, as part of that bill, is supposed to provide reimbursement for those costs. So some other areas that we've talked about in the office. One thing that was a very common topic amongst the employees when I first started was cross-training. And that also leads into having good procedural manuals. And so that's an area that we're trying to work on and focus on as we move forward. ACH vendor payments. This was something that was started, the conversation was started previously. They tried, they implemented it a little bit just to test it out. And we talked about it just yesterday. And we've come to the conclusion that there's a lot of risk involved if we are paying our vendors through ACH and EFT. One, that we would be housing information that's confidential and that could present some problems. And then also, this would actually put a larger workload on our accounts payable department. While you would think it would make it easier, it doesn't really, because they would have to create separate batches for different methods of payment. So we've currently decided to put this back on hold. It doesn't really make sense to move forward with this because of the extra workload. Another area that I would like to improve or, or just make sure that we strive to be good at is communication and transparency. I think our citizens have voiced that quite regularly, that that's what they want. So, and I know our county is good about that. And so I just want to make sure that our department follows suit with that. A big area in the communication and transparency part, for me personally, is being able to restore trust and integrity in our elections. I was reading some recent information. And in Rasmussen Research, they found that 60% of US voters think it is likely that cheating affected the outcomes of some races in the 2022 midterm elections. In addition, 55% of Republicans believe that elected officials are pushing the issue under the rug. So that concerns me because I do not want to be an elected official that pushes that under the rug. I want to be completely transparent with the citizens and I want to listen to them. So one way I think that that could happen is I've thought often about being able to promote an opportunity for the citizens and us as elected officials to come to the table and discuss concerns and solutions. So a way to do this would be a special learning and listening session where citizens can present concerns. And then we, hopefully commissioners and myself or other elected officials can listen and learn and make good decisions based on their concerns. I also want to thoroughly test and audit our process of counting and reporting election results. I want to feel comfortable with that and that it's being done correctly so that the citizens can have that same confidence. And I want to stress that when I talk about election integrity, that every employee in our office, I am confident that they have integrity. I've worked with them now for two and a half months and I have no reason to doubt that. They are great people. So when I talk about election integrity, I'm talking about a much bigger picture, not just our staff and not just right here in our county. So a great opportunity that I've just been given is last week I was notified that I was added to the Secretary of State's Summer Study on Post-Election Audits. And with that opportunity, I hope to have input on conducting thorough audits. So I hope I can have at least, some say so, since I'm coming from the largest county, that we can do that well. And I want Minnehaha County to lead the way and South Dakota to restoring that trust in elections. Our citizens deserve that and we all deserve it. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So any questions for the auditor from the commission? Very thorough report, thank you very much. All right, so that takes us to our last annual briefing of the morning. It's the planning department. You know, we typically don't have comments on just the actual briefings. But if you want to come forward, I'll take a public. You need to come up to the mic, okay? And identify yourself, please. Okay.
Matthew Monfor, I'm from Oral, South Dakota, which is south of Rapid City, about an hour. And I'm just pulling up my PowerPoint here. I won't.
So we, we have a three-minute limit.
I understand.
Okay, all right. And we don't typically take PowerPoints, but.
No, no, I'm not giving you.
Oh, okay.
For my notes, sorry. Like I said, I'm not from your county. I have worked in Pennington County though. And I support your auditor here in Minnehaha County. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak as a guest. And I don't know you and you don't know me. But I appreciate this opportunity. Just a few things that I'd like to remind our county commissioners in regards to election integrity. I'm one of the statistics that does question and has seen hard evidence of election fraud in our state. Our constitution begins with being grateful to Almighty God. And you have sworn an oath to our constitution. We also have freedom of speech. I'm aware of members of your community, and the word is getting out, that they have petitioned you to be on the agenda. For about a year and a half, I informed. And I know in Pennington County, we were allowed to get on the agenda within a month. So that's what I've been informed as. I know there's always two sides to every story, but that's what I've been informed. And that is very wrong, according to our state constitution and before God. I wanted to share with you two South Dakota codified laws. One of them being Title 12, Chapter 17B, Section 3, the authority of the governing body to adopt, experiment with, or abandon a system. And having spent plenty of time in research and talking to the top experts in America as well, you have the authority to get rid of election machines. And for those of you that may be rolling your eyes, what does this young buck, I'm 28 years old, what does he know? Being the future of our, our state, I've lived here my entire life. I care about my country. And I can tell you that in communications with the Secretary of State and auditors throughout our state, they basically regurgitate what ESNS out of Omaha, Nebraska says. There's no independent verification in our counties or from our Secretary of State. So you're just blindly trusting a system that is known to be hackable and vulnerable. So for what it's worth, it takes a lot for a young man to get up here. And I would challenge you in that regard. The other thing is Title 12, Chapter 17B, Section 2. And it says, "requirements for automatic tabulating, electronic ballot marking, and election voting equipment systems, approval of changes or modification." And it says within there, within that statute, about the middle of it, the word each capitalized there, "Each system shall fulfill the requirements for Election Assistant Commission Standards Certification and be approved by the State Board of Elections prior to distribution and use in this state." I would challenge you to look into the Election Assistant Commission Standards as well as the voluntary voting system guidelines. And to the best of my knowledge, I do not believe that those tabulators are in compliance with that. And so therefore, we would be violating state codified law. So for what it's worth, thank you for the opportunity to address you. And I hope maybe someday I could get to know you on a different level, but thank you.
Thank you.
Which one I speak into, do they both work?
Yeah, okay.
My name is Penny Baybridge. I am from Minnehaha County, and I thank you for letting me speak. I didn't plan to come to speak, but I've been both a poll worker and a poll watcher. And I just wanted to bring up that I appreciate this plan they have to look to get greeters and problem solvers. Because I want to bring to your attention that when I was watching the election last November, I was concerned about the lack of assistance and help for handicapped. I saw a number of locations where people that were handicapped or elderly people walked in. They could not stand in line and they turned around and left. And I know at one location where, it was at a church where they had greeters. And one of the poll watchers there said that the greeter would notice that this person is handicapped, make sure they had a place to sit, noted the line, so when it came to them, they could go in. So there are some people that are addressing that. And I would like to see that more, you know, for the, for the entire system. Sorry, not used to talking, okay?
I'm good.
So also supervisors, I'm told, are the ones that in charge what happens there. And at a number of locations, I know they don't really accommodate the poll watchers. At one location, I was told, well, you know, you can stand over there against the wall or sit on the floor. It's like poll watchers are the independent third parties that verify that the workers are doing their job. And they should be part of the, included in the team of the elections. And so they should be respected as far as, you know, they're not here, we need to, you know, send them off to a corner. Just, you know, they're there to make sure for the public to have a chance to see how the job is viewed. And also, training of poll watchers is, is limited. I'm, I'm reading online what poll watchers are supposed to do. But then when I talk to, you know, the supervisors, well, you can't do this, you can't do that. I'd like to see some more of this, especially if the auditor is going to bring in training, making sure that the watchers know what they are or not supposed to do. And that would come from the auditor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jessica Paloma, Lincoln County. I just had, wanted to add on to Leah's comment about the Rasmussen poll. 80% of Republicans believe there's cheating in our elections in that recent poll. And over 50% of Democrats believe there's cheating in our elections. That's nationwide. That doesn't include the independents. And so I'm just saying those numbers are so significant that we cannot ignore this anymore. Thank you.
Good morning. Cindy Meyer. I just want to say that I appreciate Leah standing up and inviting opportunity for the public and the commissioners to get together and review, hopefully, the election processes that are going on within our state. You know, we hosted an event in Sioux Falls on Saturday night and not one of you folks were in attendance. And that event was all about how they stole our election in 2020 and how they stole the election in 2022. There is concern amongst the citizens of South Dakota. There's concerns amongst the citizens in this county. You will see them, they're sitting here. It's not just the three or four of us that are consistently attending these meetings and speaking out. And so I hope that you will continue to be in support of Leah and what she is suggesting that we do in order to get back on track with our elections. Thank you.
Laura Hubble, and I did sign in this time. One of the reasons why I'm here is because it happened to me, I think. I'll just give you the situation and then let you draw your own conclusions. 2016, there was an Argus Leader, front page news, that the first time in, in history that a governor endorsed in a primary. And he endorsed Deb Peters over myself for District 9 Senate. That, that primary then, as we're watching the TV, you know how you see all these additional votes click more and more and more? Well, it started out Hubble 100, Peters 0, and it didn't move. Everybody else's votes added up and added up and added up. Mine did not. For four hours, I watched that TV, mine, mine, it didn't change. I got a call from the Argus Leader, said, oh, you lost Laura by 35 votes. And I found out later that it was never on, on TV, as far as I could, could tell, that there was like 1,400 people that voted and I lost by a few votes. 1,400 people voted that year. Granted, that was several years ago. This year, 8,000 people voted in that same district. So there is something fishy in our elections and I'd like to see it addressed. Thank you.
Scott Montgomery, Lincoln County. I'm just shocked that it takes, we have to pass a law to audit our elections. I mean, we audit our books every day. You hire a county auditor to audit the books. Why in the world do we have to have a state law passed to audit our elections? We turn this over to a private organization, ESNS, that has no vested interest in this county or this state. And we give it right over to them to, to do whatever they want. It's a time that we hand count, audit these things and take a good, hard look at what's going on here. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name's Tiana Brummett, and I'm a Minnehaha County resident. And I would just like to say thank you for all the hard work that Leah and the rest of the staff and the auditor's office are doing. And I also appreciate and support the auditor's efforts to restore public confidence in our elections. And I hope that the changes needed in order to do that would be implemented as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Mike Osted, Northeast Minnehaha, New District 2. In addition to state and other national election issues, we had it right in our backyard in Minnehaha County in my new district. And I understand that when we redistrict every 10 years, there's certain things to change and new candidates. But this would be specific to the primary election. And again, I know there's lots of things that need to be changed. It was the new redistricted, the 10-year census, census redrawing and the legislature and governor had approved the new, my district had changed three times in 12 years with locations and boundaries and even brand-new candidates, which was unique to our Brandon, Northeast Sioux Falls, Valley Springs area. But also unique was, as a resident, we received a lot of the campaign mailings. And there was a lot of endorsements within upper state party leadership. We can get into that, and I'm not mentioning certain parties, you could figure it out, where tens of thousands of dollars were spent on these new candidates, even in a primary, which is a little unprecedented. But it was also unique that we had a lot of voter problems in precinct and ballot errors in our district. And Valley Springs, they had to shut down and they were missing ballots in, in some key precincts there. And in another district in Hartford, they had incorrect ballots. So I just hope this is something we can keep an eye on and focuses, really raises the eye to our backyard local districts, not just federal election problems, but right here in Minnehaha County. And it was quite an issue, especially when you had all new candidates. And it was quite an issue, especially when you had all-new candidates. So I would encourage that this be addressed and looked into, and this is another reason why people are here, in concern of election issues right here in our own backyard.
All right. Is that everyone? Okay, thank you. Move on to item fourteen, which is the Planning Department's annual briefing. Hi, Scott.
Hello. I'm Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and it's nice to visit with you again today. I have a brief presentation. I think it, it's good to remind everyone that, what the Planning Department does, and so I hope that people in TV land will enjoy this as much as the County Commission. So with that, I'd like to just address what we've already accomplished and some of the things that we do. So the, the Planning Department's tasked with code enforcement, we do CUP inspections. The Planning Department also houses the, the Chief Building Official, which conducts building and septic inspections, and we issue the building permits. In the last year, we have updated our building permit fees that went into effect, I believe, October first. We have amended our zoning regulations for the county to address vacation homes and short-term rentals. We continue to work on that with the other municipalities that we have joint jurisdictions with, like Sioux Falls and Del Rapids. In the past year, we digitized all of our septic sys, septic permits and conditional use permit records. That was about twelve hundred condition, or twelve hundred septic permits and about seven hundred and fifty conditional use permit applications. And as you can imagine, one conditional use permit may have, a, a, a file may have hundreds of pages of site plans and neighborhood comments, and that was all digitized and now is available online, or is available for us online. We implemented the credit card payment system for building permits and septic permits and other permits, which has been useful for the public and they have appreciated that. In the last year, we approved the Girl Scout lease agreement for another five years. As you know, we, the Planning Department, I'm also tasked with managing two county parks, the Wall Lake Park and the Booker Prairie. And we have a lot of usage at Wall Lake Park. And we have an, a contract that we deal with the Girl Scouts and that was approved. We also, in the la, in the past year, in December, updated and renewed our, our GIS mapping and pictometry contract, and that's good for another three years. So last month, they Eagleview flew our entire county and captured new digital photography that will be available sometime probably August, at September, early September at the latest. That information is also online and is used by the, by the citizens as well as various departments in the county, and it shows us how the county has changed over the last three years. That's what we've completed. What we're, what we are currently doing and ongoing, we have our Planning Commission meetings, which have been well-attended by citizens. We continue to do code enforcement and, and conditional use permit inspections and applications. We continue to issue septic permits and building permits. We write staff reports and do site visits and work with the public on various applications that we get. Daily, we get zoning inquiries from realtors, from citizens. We get those inquiries online. We get them in, by, by calling, by people calling. We continue to update our zoning ordinance as needed. We have several amendments that you are aware of, that we're, that are in the process, short-term rentals, transmission pipeline ordinance, and, and that's ongoing. We continue to organize some of our older permits and digitize building permit records to save space and to maximize efficiency. That's what we're currently doing. And then here's some code enforcement numbers. We have a, a seasonal code enforcement person that helped. We hire Shawna Goldhammer. She started last week. And typically, if you, if, the way that code enforcement works is, you know, we, we receive complaints from property owners or we become aware of them ourselves, and then we deal with those with a, a, a specific process. And this tells you, this chart tells you the number of complaints, nuisance complaints that were filed in 2022, about thirty-one nuisance complaints and twenty-three zoning complaints. The difference between a nuisance complaint and a zoning complaint for the public is we have a nuisance ordinance that deals with things like tall weeds, junk cars, issues that are spelled out in the, in the nuisance ordinance. A zoning ordinance nuisance, or a zoning ordinance violation would be a use where people maybe have, are, are conducting a use that is not allowed or has built a fence that is too high or, or an issue that is not addressed in the zoning ordinance. And then also on this chart, it will tell you how many files we closed in 2022 and, and if you, if you recall, many of these nuisance and zoning complaints can extend for over a year because we continue to work with, with people. And if the nuisance is too great or they don't get it cleaned up, then we are obligated to bring it to the County Commission. And you may recall that we have had a, a couple of properties declared a public nuisance, and then that triggers another whole series of working with, with that property owner to get the property cleaned up. The next chart that I'd like to show you, the next slide, is basically just an overview of the number of, generally, the number of different submits and applications that, submittals and applications that we have taken in, in, in 2022. We took in approximately seventy-six conditional use permits. Of that seventy-six, three were denied by the Planning Commission or County Commission. Several, five were withdrawn. And this also tells you the number of rezonings that were submitted. We had five rezonings. We don't do a lot of variances, which are a good thing because that demonstrates that our, our zoning ordinance is working and that they're able to meet the requirements or not having an issue meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So we do a number of different types of permits. In addition, we do temporary use permits, we do agricultural tourism permits, we deal with plating. You can, we, and we work closely with the Registered Deeds when we do get plat submittals. We work with equalization and the Highway Department all sign off on plats, and then finally they are recorded at the Registered Deeds. So with that, what we are planning to do next is we are continuing to look at our zoning ordinance and any reviews that need to be done. We continue to want to expand our, the potential for submitting building permits online. That's can be, we're working on that and the benefit of, of work of in-person building permits, there's a, there is a, a huge benefit because we can work with the property owners, we can better dialogue with them on the requirements of, of what the next steps are. And sometimes that can, that information or that one-on-one can get lost if it's just an online submittal. So we're looking at how we can potentially have online submittals, and we're working with IT on this, but yet still be able to dialogue and, and get extra information if something is not on the site plan that we need. We continue with park improvements, with tree planting and other park ra, park and recreational opportunities. We are looking at digitizing other past files like rezonings, variances, floodplain development permits. And then lastly, we are hopefully going to be updating our permitting system from PED to Parcel Manager. That's an ongoing process and we're working with IT on that. So with that in mind, the next slide tells you the number of, or shows you the, the different communities that we deal with on a regular basis. I like to work closely with, with all our, our partner communities and because our land uses can sometimes spill over from one jurisdiction into the other. And I think it's good that many of the, of the citizens realize that we have a lot of incorporated municipalities that are in the county and we deal closely with them. We deal also with townships, with, with road issues with townships, and we, we deal closely with the state of South Dakota on transportation issues. So I would gladly entertain any questions. That concludes my presentation. And I certainly appreciate working with the County Commission and I know that our staff likes dealing with all the entities that we work with, all the other various departments in the county, and we appreciate all of them and all the work that they help us do hand in hand. So I would, don't want to call or name every county, every department. I might forget someone, but I, we certainly appreciate all the county departments as well as our partners out of, out of the county, like cities and Southeast Council. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have and otherwise, thank you very much.
All right. Since we had public comment in the last presentation, is there anyone here for public comment on this presentation? All right, I'll turn it over to the Commission. Are there any questions for Scott? All right. Well, thank you very much. That takes us to item fifteen, which is to declare Planning Department vehicles and equipment as surplus for disposal by auction.
Lost my glasses. Need to see which, I have two items here. The next one is...
Item fifteen, a request for surplus.
Okay. We are asking to have several vehicles declared a surplus and, and authorize the deposit of the sale of those items to the general fund. The, the said vehicles are at the County Highway Department. We're working with County Highway to put them on an online auction. And those vehicles are a two thousand and seven Durango that has approximately a hundred and eighty thousand miles, a nineteen ninety-six pickup, a thirty-five hundred pickup that has approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles. And then there is a Gator, a, a Gator and then a blade with a, some kind of a three-point hitch. So we'd ask to have those declared surplus and to put the proceeds of the sale towards, in the general fund.
Questions? Commissioner Karski.
Scott, just kind of referencing item sixteen, the next, I mean, do we go out to any of the other departments and say, you know, is there a memo sent out, so like facilities, do you need this?
There is a, there is, that information is put out and it, it, it's available. It, it'll go on a surplus list and i, if there is an entity that would want that before the sale, it can be pulled off and we would go through, transfer that if someone expressed interest in wanting it.
So you're confident everybody has knowledge of...
Hoping they do, yes. It, they should. It, it's put out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to declare surplus.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item seventeen, which is to consider a motion to authorize the Facilities Department to purchase an unbudgeted truck to replace a nineteen ninety-four Chevy two fifty truck. Mark. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. Uh, yeah, currently have a nineteen ninety-four Chevy two-five hundred pickup that we use pretty regularly. Couple weeks ago, we took it in for service. It was stalling out on my crew while they were driving up and down the road. They got the truck up on the hoist before they even looked into any of the other issues too extensively. They realized that three of the six cab mounts were rusted completely out. So they didn't move forward with any of the other inspections. They called immediately and said, this truck is not safe to drive up and down the road. They, even if they had new cab mounts, there's no good bones to weld to because it's completely rusted. So I asked about some of the other issues that if they had rough costs or rough ideas, what they thought was wrong. And it did have head gasket leaking, oil cooler lines were leaking, and there's an internal issue within the motor, which more than likely is going to cost about seventy-seven hundred dollars to replace, to fix those two items along with a reman motor installed. Due to the age of the truck and obviously the safety conditions of driving it and not being able to be repaired, I'm requesting Commission approval to work with the Highway Department to purchase an unbudgeted pickup to replace this vehicle. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mark?
I guess the obvious one, where, where are the funds coming from? I mean, it's unbudgeted, so...
So I'll work to absorb it within my budget. Historically, I've been able to manage my budget to have just a little bit of funding left over every year. I'm hopeful for the same thing this year. So I'm gonna, my plan is to absorb it within this year's budget.
When would you expect to replace it?
Um, as soon as possible. I, I talked to, I've been talking with Fred up at the Highway and they recently purchased a Dodge two-five hundred. And there's more vehicles real similar to that still available here in town, so...
Can I ask why a three-quarter ton, why a half-ton wouldn't be adequate, or is that what your intent is?
No, my intent's a three-quarter ton because this is kind of our main puller in the summertime and, and in the winter too, because in the wintertime, my other two, three-quarter tons, well, I got a three-quarter ton and a one-ton, and those get plows put on them. So I try to ease the amount of abuse on those in the wintertime by having them bounce through town with a plow on, pulling a heavy trailer. So this one's mainly a, a pull and pick up anymore. And that's why I prefer a three-quarter ton.
Good.
Other questions for Mark? So the idea is that you get approval today and then you'll, will you come back with the approval for, for the actual car that you identify?
Correct.
The actual truck you identify, sorry. Okay. All right. I'd entertain a motion.
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, it takes us to item eighteen, which is a motion to declare various Sheriff Office vehicles and equipment as surplus. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Ziska, Patrol Captain for the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, am making a motion to declare four of our vehicles as, to get rid of by auction. These vehicles have reached the end of their useful life. Some of them have major mechanical issues that we've been struggling, struggling with for years. They all are very, very high mileage. Typically, what we seek to do is when we get our replacement vehicles, we seek to replace as many of our older aging vehicles with older patrol vehicles. Because we were a year behind in, in actually purchasing, these vehicles just have a lot of miles on them. So a fortunate...
No, my intent's a three quarter ton because this is kind of our main puller in the summertime and and in the winter, too. Because in the wintertime, my other two, three quarter tons, well, I got a three quarter ton and a one ton, and those get plows put on them. So I try to ease the amount of abuse on those in the wintertime by having them bounce through town with a plow on, pulling a heavy trailer. So this one's mainly a pull and pick up anymore. And that's why I prefer a three quarter ton.
Other questions for Mark? So the idea is that you get approval today, and then you will you come back with the approval for for the actual car that you identify?
Correct.
Or actual truck you identify, sorry. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, it takes us to item eighteen, which is a motion to declare various sheriff office vehicles and equipment as surplus. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Ziska, patrol captain for the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I'm making a motion to declare four of our vehicles as to get rid of by auction. These vehicles have reached the end of their useful life. Some of them have major mechanical issues that we've been struggling struggling with for years. They all are very, very high mileage. Typically, what we seek to do is when we get our replacement vehicles, we seek to replace as many of our older aging vehicles with older patrol vehicles. Because we were a year behind in in actually purchasing, these vehicles just have a lot of miles on them. So fortunately, out of the six that we replaced, four of them are are being asked to go to auction. The last item on here is a Polaris side by side. That was actually seized property. After we gained ownership of it as the sheriff's office, we offered it to various other county departments to see if they could have any use out of it. No one thought that it was worth repairing to to have use out of it. So we're going to actually try to auction that off as well. And does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. So before we vote and before you leave, I just want to take, I just want to recognize that it's National Police Week.
Yes.
And on behalf of you and all of the people you represent here today, I really would like to thank you. On behalf of the entire commission and on behalf of all the taxpayers that we represent.
Thank you.
You guys do a lot of amazing work in really tough times, so thank you very much.
We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item nineteen, which is to authorize the human services department to withdraw from participation in the catastrophic county poor relief program. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jamie Phelps with Human Services. The catastrophic county poor relief program makes it possible for the counties to set up a catastrophic pool or an insurance pool. That would cover the counties in South Dakota for large catastrophic claims from the hospitals for the poor that aren't covered or insured when they end up in the hospitals. And our office at Human Services is responsible for undertaking that. And so what happens with the program is, under that program, the counties can, if they receive that catastrophic or larger claim. Petition under the program to have that reimbursed, part of the part of the claim reimbursed, or part of the amount that they pay for those claims reimbursed through that program. They have to be eligible for it. There's criteria to pass. And there's a board that oversees this. That's comprised of various representatives from the different counties in the state that decides that, okay? So how it works is the county would, that received the catastrophic claim would petition the the board if it was, ended up being twenty thousand dollars or more. And then the county would pay that first twenty thousand dollars of the claim. And then beyond that, the county would only pay ten thousand dollars, I mean, I'm sorry, ten percent of the balance. And then the 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 pool would pay the ninety percent of the balance beyond that twenty thousand, initial twenty thousand paid by the county. So what's important to note in this is that that twenty thousand doesn't seem like a lot. Well, that's the Medicaid rate or the DRG rate after, you know, figuring it, scaling it down. So that we're talking about essentially catastrophic claims that are much larger. So it's not uncommon for us to see in our office like a hundred thousand dollar retail hospital bill. And then once we get that knocked down to Medicaid rates, which which is what we pay, and that's considered payment at full, that ends up being ten thousand dollars. So, you know, you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar retail bill, and you end up being a Medicaid rate of twenty thousand. We would pay twenty thousand on that. We wouldn't get any reimbursement even if we qualified, you know? So we're talking claims really essentially that are hundreds of thousands, you know, a catastrophic claim. So that's how that works. We've had now in the past, in the recent years, we haven't had any new claims that met that criteria. And we did have, in the past couple of years, we had a handful that we submitted to that board for reimbursement. But those were older claims from years back that as a part of a settlement that we made with the hospital. And those were not reimbursed. They did not meet the criteria. So we haven't had any reimbursements for the past couple of years at least. The counties pay into this annually into this pool. And typically, we'll spend about twenty thousand or so on average, sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on the year. And and then what happens is then they can, then we can go ahead and petition that for reimbursement. But the the other thing I would note is that now that we've had the Medicaid expansion voted in, and that is going to take effect here July this year. That we anticipate that will basically cover most of counties' obligations with poor relief for hospital claims, hospitalizations, a majority of it. So right now, currently, we have the Affordable Care Act, which covers folks that are any, you know, generally speaking, from a hundred percent to four hundred percent of federal poverty guidelines income wise. And so just to put that in perspective, an individual with income somewhere up around sixty thousand could still potentially qualify for federal subsidies on their insurance through the ACA marketplace online. So and of course, they get a lot more subsidies the lower their income is, you know, a hundred percent or two hundred percent, we get a lot more federal subsidies to help them pay their insurance towards their insurance premium, you know? But what we had is we had a situation where we didn't expand Medicaid for many years, and everybody below that level, all the way down to zero, didn't have any coverage. So a lot of those folks, that's the majority of what we were seeing up there in the hospitals that were uninsured, you know? So now that we have that expansion taking place, anywhere from a hundred and thirty percent down can be covered now and apply through Medicaid and be covered through that. And from what I understand, there's also going to be a retro, so which means that it it can go back once you apply Medicaid and you qualify as an individual. It can go back several months and become active for several months back. So we see that in terms of the ACA covering all up to four hundred percent and then now covering below the hundred and thirty percent down with the Medicaid expansion. Majority of the county's hospital claims should be covered through that. There's going to be maybe a few outliers out there. Never say never. But to have one that would qualify for the county standards according to statutes and requirements. And plus, be eligible for reimbursement and receive a reimbursement that's catastrophic, a huge amount, is unlikely. So at this point, Human Services is recommending a motion to withdraw from the CCPR.
All right. Questions? Commissioner Karski?
I can make a motion with a comment unless there's public comment on it.
Is there any public comment on this item this morning? Okay, Commissioner Karski?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Karski had a comment?
I visited with Kerry Benz and Chris Jacobson from South Dakota Association of County Commissioners yesterday because that group manages this money. Actually, they're sitting on a pool of over eight hundred thousand dollars sitting in this fund. Pennington County withdrew from it quite some time ago. Chris wasn't surprised that we were taking this action. I anticipate that, as again with Medicaid expansion and so forth, that it'll probably become an obsolete tool that counties can use. But I think it's well thought out and a very good idea to move forward with this action.
Any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
Jamie, do you have an estimate on what the impact on your budget's going to be because of Medicaid expansion?
No, it's really tough to say, you know? I did talk to somebody down in, I believe it was Oklahoma, where they had recently, last year, expanded Medicaid. And the medical program there where they handle most of the medical, talked to the head lady there, and she said that what they were seeing was huge reductions. Huge reductions in what they're seeing for the need there. And she thought the program would kind of, thought maybe ended in the next year or two. And we're already slower. It's slowed down in medical quite a bit the past couple of years. And I think with this Medicaid expansion, too, it'll be down to a trickle. So those would be, there might be a handful here or there. It could be somebody who potentially, you know, somebody who has much higher income. But maybe couldn't afford to sign up for ACA marketplace insurance because they had so many expenses. Now, all those expenses would have to qualify under our guidelines to show that they couldn't, didn't have the ability to afford insurance. Otherwise, it'd be denied for ability to afford insurance. We'd run the formulas and all that type of thing. So they'd have to pass that, but then it'd also have to show that it's catastrophic on top of that and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And eligible for reimbursement if you send it to the board and this and that. So you go through all those things and, yeah, probably not going to get much of your money's worth out of that going forward, you know? Since we haven't had any claims in recent years even that that met the criteria to apply for reimbursement.
Well, and I just point out, I mean, I think my first year as a commissioner, eight years ago, our current soon to be retired commission officer was in Human Services at the time. And there was conversation at that time, looking at it to try to see whether we should remain in in this fund. So I think I think it makes sense, something that we've looked at and studied for quite some time. And seems like it's a well thought out plan given the current circumstances, so. All right, we had a motion and a second. Any further comment? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item twenty, to our very patient highway superintendent, Steve Groen. Consider a motion to declare listed equipment as surplus.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, highway superintendent. Several of these items are from our old highway building that, as we've moved into our new facility, we've been looking at our old items that we don't use anymore. And we have a scheduled Purple Wave auction on June sixth. And with your permission, we'd like to add these to that auction so we can dispose of them. Once the auction's done, we'd be looking for your direction on where to deposit the proceeds.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
On item fifteen, we, our motion was to declare a surplus and to put the money back to the general fund. Couldn't we do that here, declare a surplus and the proceeds to be deposited into the highway fund?
To the highway fund?
Yeah. Do it all at once instead of having them come back with it.
See heads shaking, yes. No heads shaking, no. So apparently.
Yeah, so that'd be my motion to declare a surplus and deposit the proceeds of the sale into the highway fund.
I support that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item twenty one, which is to authorize the chair to sign the Second Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement. Authorizing the county to review and order any H lot plat required for project completion. And to jointly employ the registered land surveyor for the limited purposes to facilitate recording of said H lots. That was a mouthful.
Yes, so Steve Groen, again, highway superintendent, this is Slip Up Creek Road, the road that we worked with on Veterans Affairs to have rebuilt and paved out to the National Veteran Cemetery. This winter, when the land surveyors went to register the H lots at the Register of Deeds office. It was noticed that the boilerplate stamp they used said the H lots by order of the city of Sioux Falls. They were not by order of city of Sioux Falls. It was on order of Veterans Affairs. Well, further investigation showed that Veterans Affairs did not have statutory ability to order H lots. And in order to be able to assist Veterans Affairs to get this part of the project completed so that we can finish getting the road transferred to the county ownership. I've agreed to order the H lots on behalf of Veterans Affairs at no cost or obligation of the county, just to help facilitate the paperwork.
Any questions for Steve? Appreciate you being a good partner in this. I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. There's no further questions. Any public comment? No public comment. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item twenty two, consider bid results and award recommendation for annual materials letting. And authorize the chair to sign three of the fine vendor agreements.
Once again, Steve Groen, highway superintendent, there is a typo on the briefing memo. The bids were open on April twenty sixth, not May twenty sixth. We're asking your approval to approve three of the contracts, one for hot mixed asphalt, one for cutting edges, and the other for rock, salt, and transportation. The salt sand mixture, we did not receive any bids for. And proposal number one is the next agenda item that we're recommending rejection of.
Okay, questions for Steve? Any prediction when the cost of asphalt starts going down?
When's oil going to go down to two dollars?
Okay. All right, if there are no questions for Steve on this, then I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of proposals two, three, and five.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item twenty three, which is consider bid results and reject recommendations for annual materials letting. Reject one of the five proposals. Steve?
Once again, Steve Groen, highway superintendent, back on April twenty sixth, one of the bids that were open was for medium curing asphalt, tack oil, M C seventy. Their bid was over twenty five thousand dollars, and they did not have a, the required five hundred dollar bid security for their bid. We weren't certain that we were going to need M C seventy this year. We did not purchase any in twenty twenty two. We did in twenty one, we bought a tanker load of the oil, which we still believe we have sufficient to last us through this season. If for some reason we need more, we'll go purchase some through the Lincoln County contract.
Okay. Any questions for Steve on this item?
Move approval.
Second. So motion and a second. Any public comment on this?
Declare, and to clarify, approval means rejection.
Rejecting, yeah. Yes means no.
Okay, thanks.
We got that cleared up. All right, so we have a motion and a second to reject the proposed, the bid. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So this takes us to item twenty four, which is to consider abatements recommended for denial. Chris Lulla, good morning.
Good morning, Chris Lulla, Director of Legalization. Before you, we have two properties that we are recommending for denial. These are kind of bittersweet. It's kind of some oversight in our office that we are trying to take care of of applicants when they come in. So a lot of these get very confusing with dates and times, and we're crossing many years. So these individuals come into our office receiving their permanent total. They've purchased houses. We look at their award date. We go back and have them fill out these forms, trying to take care of them. And then after they leave and we start putting all of the documents in and researching everything, we discovered that on these two properties. On November first of twenty twenty one, for the twenty two assessment here, the houses were not completed. We did not have a completed house. They purchased them completed in twenty two. So unfortunately, it is problematic that we're trying to take care of them. And once these documents are filled out, we have to process them. We cannot take them away. So unfortunately, for for the twenty two, pay twenty three years on both of these, they were not completed houses, not owner occupied, not eligible to receive them, but we had the application filled out. So it's more just procedural to have to move them through as recommended for denial. They've been made aware of this. We do have them receiving veterans exemption for twenty three, pay twenty four for twenty four, pay twenty five. So these, we're just trying to take care of them in our office while they're there, and unfortunately, they don't qualify. So we're asking for these to be recommended as denials.
Any questions for Chris? I think we'll take these as separate motions. So the first one, if there are no questions for Chris, would be to deny the abatement request on parcel sixty three, seven, two, nine. For the twenty twenty two property taxes and the amount of eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty eight cents.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then I take a motion on parcel number nine, three, three, eight, zero, um property taxes in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. We're talking about the twenty-twenty-two property taxes.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please. Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Takes us to item twenty-five, we've almost got the room completely cleared out now. Consider a motion to approve or deny the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four malt beverage and South Dakota farm licensed wine renewal applications. Kim gets to run back and forth. Thank you.
Only one today. Um good morning, Commissioners, Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. The malt beverage and SD farm license renewal applications for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four licensing period have been received by the Auditor's Office. Each of the below um establishments have submitted the proper application and license renewal fees. There are no concerns or objections reported by the state's attorney, planning, zoning, and sheriff's office when they were sent for review. For your information, the renewal fee for each of these entities is three hundred dollars, of which one hundred and fifty is remitted back to the state of South Dakota Department of Revenue and the remaining one fifty um stay within the county. We have no limit on the number of malt beverage and SD farm wine licenses that are available. Their current licenses will expire on June thirtieth of this year. And the good news is all of these licensed owners have passed, lost two compliance checks.
All right, thank you, any questions for Kim? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion um by Commissioner Kipli and second by Commissioner Blainberg. I'll let Kim sit down, take a breath. Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to item twenty-six, which is to consider the prioritization of county funding topics for the Legislative Summer Study on County Funding and Services. Carol Muller.
Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer, and you are, you are almost done with your agenda today. But we do need to get a little bit of input from you. Uh this summer, the Legislative Session approved a twenty-twenty-four summer study to examine the appropriate administration and funding of certain services to be provided by county governments. You may recall that this year during the Legislative Session, there were a, a significant number of bills that legislators brought forward and said, you know, can we do this for the counties? Can we do that for the counties? I, I don't think there was a lot that came out of those bills in terms of that. Instead, they said, you know what, let's go back, look at it in a, if I can say, a more holistic view, a bigger picture. And the result of that is this particular study. So with that, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners requests that the commission prioritize the list of services that was put into the scope of services, scope of the study. Included in that is the medical assistance for indigent people, elections costs, veteran service officer, criminal defense costs, courts, cybersecurity, and, and mental illness. So from you today, I need to have a little bit of discussion and uh help me prioritize this list. In order to assist you on that, I did go through and work with the Auditor's Office, and we came through with some financial costs. A lot of times, putting dollars to it will help drive that particular discussion. Couple of things that I just want to point out on that. One is the criminal defense cost, which is the largest number that's up there. That is the cost of the public defender's office, the cost of the office of the public advocate. And then in the court budget each year, you approve right around a million dollars a year for uh outside counsel when we still have conflicts and we need to bring somebody from the outside in. So there's about an additional million dollars that's in that criminal defense cost. So with that, would ask for maybe a few minutes of discussion and uh I don't need to have an official vote taken on any kind of list or anything, but some direction so I can respond to SDACC, of which Commissioner Kerski is chair, and I know he'll appreciate that input.
All right, thank you. I don't think there's anyone here for public comment, but I'll ask, is there anybody? Okay? And I'll turn it over to the Commissioners, Commissioner Kipli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I guess I would just uh, what rises to the top for me, both monetarily and I think politics is the art of the possible here. I think we've maybe got some momentum related to the criminal defense costs with also a, a simultaneously, a, a task force on uh indigent criminal defense. So kind of reading the tea leaves there, I think there might be some legislators that are working on that study and/or the county study that will kind of dive into those topics deeply. I think that's something that does affect all of our sister counties, so maybe we can rally some support uh to getting some state involvement or some restructuring of the way we do indigent criminal defense. I, I could also make the ca, similar case, I think Commissioner Kerski and I have had some conversations around veteran service officers, and I know there was some movement early on in Legislative Session related to that, and I just don't know that it was well-thought-out. I think maybe in a summer studies setting, that could be um better organized in a statewide manner. So those are the two that jump out to me. The mental illness one, I think if we had the answers to that, uh that would be great. I, I don't know, other than just the state absorbing the costs, I think there might be, need to be a more, more thorough uh look at the way we deal with mental illness, but that honestly might be too big of a nut to crack. So that's why I guess I would uh look to the, the public safety aspects of the, what we have on these line items as criminal defense costs and courts uh as probably our, our best priorities, in my opinion. Thank you.
Other comments, Commissioner Kerski?
We agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Kipli, um a lot of conversations, um both the Senator Diebert, Senator Crabtree, the Senate Majority Leader. You know, the interest in this is pretty high. In fact, four hours ago, when I was driving up, on the radio, I heard Senator Chase, who chairs this committee, talking about the um work that's being done. And um criminal defense costs is definitely, or for most counties, is definitely an issue. And um I, I think there's a lot of interest from the state, and it is a very large budget item for us. So I think that really should be our top priority. Uh the V, the VSOs, I think that would be a program definitely managed better by the state. I mean, they could take that over and, and do it um very easily. And it's not us that would benefit as much, but there's a lot of counties, I mean, statutorily, they gotta have one, they share one, um it's just not probably the program it was ten, twenty, fifty years ago, however far back you want to go. So I think there's some low-hanging fruit there that they could pretty well take care of. One that doesn't have a dollar number to it, cybersecurity. We do, I think our IT does a great job of cybersecurity, but a lot of these smaller counties, again, they subcontract out to the local uh computer store, and um that's their cybersecurity. There's just not a lot of consistency. I think they're, they're probably gonna have to look hard at that. There's counties that have gotten in some really um deep financial trouble because they did not have adequate um cybersecurity. But again, in my mind, if the state's gonna look at these, they gotta encompass the, everybody. So you know, what could the potential um upside be for us? Is that we get to participate and, and maybe even lead a lot of the discussion in some of these areas, so. So again, criminal defense costs, cybersecurity, VSOs, all come to the top of my list.
Other comments? Commissioner Benega?
I would just add that I agree with what's been said, but I also think that mental illness is an issue that we all need to be even more aware of because frankly, JDC, our jails, and not having the availability of space at the Human Her, Services Committee in Yankton is gonna be a big issue for us. Even when hospitals are building large, expensive uh facilities, uh they're not able to keep up. And frankly, mental illness in JDC is a big issue, along with a jail. So I think that has to be on the list as a priority.
Commissioner Blainberg?
Um I would agree with all the previous statements that have been made so far. I think I've had a lot of discussions about this recently, and the criminal defense cost is the one item that just keeps coming up over and over.
And I would note, I mean, I don't disagree about the order of the priorities, but cases could be made for almost all of these items, kind of similar to what Commissioner Kerski said. Well, I think we have the, the luxury of having a good IT staff. I think that the point that um Carol makes about Tyler in code makes a lot of sense as well is that, you know, every county, almost all of the counties across the state have to use property tax software to manage that. While we have good support, most of counties can't afford their own in-house IT. Doesn't really make sense for all sixty-six counties to have their own license if the state could manage that. That's very specialized software because it has to be compliant with state law. So that's another thing that I think that the um could be an area where they could make a big impact. And also, we haven't mentioned elections, but I just would point out that it's not too long that we're gonna be paying seven fi, figures for elections here in Minnehaha County as um our population continues to grow. So that's also a big expense for us in an area where um things are handled similarly across the state. So while the order of priority probably doesn't change, just shows that there's a lot of important services that the county provides and that um, that we appreciate that the state taking a look at it, because I do think that there are some areas where they could make some real significant input. And with that, Carol, I'd like to know if there's, if that was the kind of conversation you were look, looking for in direction?
Well, I think in terms of order of prioritizing this, that it's um very strongly comes across that criminal defense cost is the priority. And I would just ask if you were to go through and prioritize mental illness, elections, in codes, cybersecurity, VSOs, is there anything that you'd say is your second highest priority? I don't think we need to list them all out, but maybe at least the first couple priorities?
Well, I heard a lot of people mention the VSOs. I'm not sure that, I think that that's just a efficiency issue for across the state to make sure that um, I think while our citizens get really good service from our VSO, that just for efficiencies across the state, that makes sense. I don't, I think it's difficult necessarily, criminal defense cost is such a significantly higher um cost for us that that really jumps out as the first priority. And I'm not sure that there's a really strong second that I heard. But I'd listen to other folks for, for ideas. Commissioner Kerski?
The in-code, I absolutely love it. I think that um Monty Wanabak in our IT um could very easily lead that. I don't know if it's a summer study, I, I mean, it's not the, big enough to be a summer study. To me, that's something that, boy, any legislator should easily grasp hold of and say, hey, we can do this. Or the Department of Revenue saying, we should be leading this charge in this. It's not a, you know, it is a statewide county issue, doesn't need a lot of studying. It's pretty, pretty black and white. So I don't know, I, I think we have to create that awareness, maybe that comes from us. I've already talked to Senator Diebert about it, so we're kind of working on that. But um it, it would make a lot of sense for counties and maybe um through the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, we can make that one of our um a, a platform items, one of our priority items legislatively to take it through that venue. So I, I would suggest that. But to me, you know, again, the veteran service officers, I don't want to, being a veteran myself, I'm not looking to cut service to veterans here locally. I think that, or I would envision that if the state has a statewide program for VSOs, that they probably have regional offices. And I think we'd have actually more VSOs housed here with providing more services to the veterans. So um for that reason, I would support having that one probably as our second one. Again, it's um something that would need state approval and the state legislature to take a look at it from a, you know, what are each counties paying for it? What are, what's the benefit? How many veterans per county, et cetera? There's just a lot of maybe small moving parts, but I think they could easily remedy that quickly. So um and then cybersecurity would be my third in that order.
Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe for those people who are in the audience and don't know what in-code is, and for those that are listening today, either live or on a tape replay, Minnehaha, Minnehaha, South Dakota has sixty-six counties, and that means that sixty-six counties need to figure out their tax software. Sixty-six counties are doing it. Is there the ability to say, we do this as a state and come in and make it more efficient and get rid of sixty-six set of decisions, sixty-six individual bills? Just a lot of opportunity that's out there. So. I think this gives me direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, takes us to our last item on our agenda for today, item twenty-seven. Authorize the chair to sign the contract between Minnehaha County and Tegra for the owner's representation services on the Juvenile Justice Center, Tyler.
Tyler, Commission Office, for your consideration is an agreement between Tegra and the county to perform owner's representative services as we move forward with the Juvenile Justice Center project. Tegra has been a part of our last four probably construction projects with the highway facility, the jail, um and this building that we're in today. The contract is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifty percent of which is paid during the design phase, which we are in currently, and then the remainder will be paid during construction. Just as a reminder of the timeline, the design phase is estimated to end at the end of twenty-twenty-three with construction beginning in spring of twenty-twenty-four, completing in the end of twenty-twenty-six. So I ask for your consideration of approval of this contract.
Any public comment on this item? Any questions for Tyler on this item? I'd say that this is pretty much in line with the type of contract we've done before and very similar to the contract we did on the jail, which is a similar-sized project.
There's rumors it's the exact same contract.
All right, I'd entertain a motion then.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please. Kerski?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment this morning? Seeing no one moving forward, this is our opportunity for Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any reports this morning? I would be remiss not to recognize Tom Greco as being here today. He started uh this week as um our new commission officer. Tom, I don't know if you want to come forward and make any comments? Can really put you on the spot here. We're really glad to have you, can't tell you how glad we are.
Thank you, Commissioners, I, yeah. So I did come back for my second day, um you know, had a great start yesterday. Do uh enjoy the hospitality, the warm welcome that I received uh from folks in the commission office, the Commissioners uh and folks that I'm meeting throughout the building and uh outlying buildings. Certainly looking forward to learning a lot and uh jumping into everything. So appreciate this opportunity, and again, I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. He's got a very aggressive onboarding schedule, so we appreciate all the work he's doing now to get up and running. Any other commission liaison reports? All right, um non-action commission discussion items. Everybody's ready to go, I'd consider a motion to recess.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Think we will reconvene in executive session in about five minutes because we got another meeting that starts at noon. Oh, we're gonna meet in here for exec?